Longmont City Council Study Session to Order. Could we please start with the roll call?
Mayor Coombs.
Here.
Councilmembers Bagley.
Here.
Christensen.
Here.
Finley.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
Peck.
Santos.
Mayor, we have a quorum.
I pledge allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Joan, did you want to bring something up now at this time?
Hello. I was wondering, or actually I would like, when we have the presentation on gas and oil, which we all agreed should be a study session, I would like to request that that study session be interactive in the fact that staff can answer questions that the residents bring up. And I would also like to request that we have another presentation along with it from Josh Jostwick about gathering lines and the lines that are going to be transporting the oil and gas, so that when we vote on it, we have a really informed decision to make. I don't know if that's a motion or just a request, if you would direct, if we want to direct staff to do that.
It's a little bit out of what we normally do. I mean, I don't have a s— have we ever had an interactive study session like that before, or what's the advantages or, I mean?
I don't think we've ever, Eugene, I'm gonna look to you, too. I don't think we've ever had an interactive study session. We've had other sessions that we've had interactive where it's the open forum or other events similar to what, how we did the discussion on medical marijuana, where it's a separate forum.
Yeah. I mean, we can ask staff questions during it any time, but to have it, you know, Councilmember Santos.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. When we talked about this last week, it was an idea to have a study session to bring us information as we would normally do, all the information that we, that the council would need regarding oil and gas. Then we, after that, my recollection, that after that meeting, we could determine whether or not to have an open forum where those type of interactions can occur. To do it all at that study session, there's, there's no, well, there's no equal weight as far as we get our information, the public will get the same information that we get, and then we can move forward. That, that's what I had hoped to do, because it was mentioned, I think Councilmember Christensen asked that perhaps somebody can give a presentation regarding a moratorium. That's more, that should happen at the, at the forum than at the study session, in my opinion.
Well, that kind of makes sense. I think it's better to have two separate things if we decide at the study session that we want to have a forum and more public engagement. That'd be fine, but I think it'd probably be cleaner to have two separate meetings. Councilmember Bagley?
Yeah, I agree with you said, Mayor.
Councilmember Christensen?
Since the order of our meeting is that the public would be invited to be heard before that, perhaps they could submit such questions that they have at that time before the presentation, just as they, they can do that tonight.
But anybody can do that, but it's, it's hard to answer questions on the fly.
Well, during, after their presentation, we'll be asking questions, too, and we could ask some of those questions.
Harold, do you? Councilmember Santos?
Go ahead, Harold.
You know, go ahead.
I, I was gonna say is that anybody can send us questions ahead of time or to staff prior to them. So, we'll get, like our agenda, it'll be released on Friday for the public, they can go over it, if they have questions that they have, the public has, they can either send them to staff, the staff person that's going to be doing it, which is probably Eugene, and Dan Kramer, or they can send them to council at that time. And of course, during public invited to be heard, people will have questions, and then it'd be, you know, I would hope that we would try to answer the, some of those questions at that time. And then have that, if we decide, that open forum later down the line.
Okay. Councilmember Moore?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. There were a lot of people that were really wanting more information about the conservation easement. I mean, from the technical side, the engineer and me said, yes, it's a done deal, I'm ready to move forward, but there still are questions out there about oil and gas. So, the compromise was to have a study session for education, the council, and the public on what we can do with oil and gas today after the new, after the Supreme Court decision and after the new regulations from COGA. That's something I think we all need anyway, so I, that's would be my suggestion. The idea of an open session where we can have questions and answers back and forth, I think I would be in favor of holding it after our education session, our study session, so we have the education behind us, but I don't want us to even think that, restate, I'd like to think that we would have an open forum with council and the public, because I think that's where they feel like there needs to be more back and forth. So, that, I would support having the two meetings.
Okay, I think that's kind of the general consensus. Councilmember Peck?
Thank you, okay, that makes sense. And I actually just wanted this discussion out in the public, so thank you. I would like to request that Josh Jostwick though be part of the presentation, either at the open forum or at the study session, I don't care which, so that we get the information on those gathering lines and transport lines, and the public gets it also. So, he's the only one I know that is an actual expert in the field, and I do have his contact information.
Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. So, to be honest, I've missed a lot of council meetings. I have not watched them all to catch up. I'm working on it, it's my homework. So, question number one for my fellow council members, and I guess I'd just ask you guys, what is the purpose of the forum? Keeping in mind that I've got an adverse, I've got an extremely, extremely adverse reaction to the topic of oil and gas. So, my question is, what is the point of the forum, the get-together? What are we doing and how did it come about? I mean, I know the answer to that, but I want to, I'm leading somewhere.
Well, you know, we put conservation easements, which the public asks us to do, and we, we all want to, we're all in favor, and they're a good thing because they give us, you know, they preserve the land for farming and open space and trails and all the good stuff that we all love. But, you know, there's some existing contractual things that we need to deal with, with our master contract with top operating or whoever they sell their thing to if they, so that's kind of where we're at. And, you know, people are just, anytime they hear gas and oil and conservation easements, everybody kind of just goes crazy.
Right. I guess my, my concern is, I mean, I'm, I'm along for the ride, but my concern would be that we've spent, I, I just, so we're not going to be dealing, I, I know that there's a lot of talk about oil and gas regulations, et cetera, that is not the purpose of this meeting.
No, we're not gonna redo our gas and oil.
Okay. That, 'cause I was gonna say, I'm completely, I would do about anything not to touch that again.
No, we're not.
Because it protects our residential neighborhoods and we're good.
Because where, where the state is like more stringent than those would be, so we don't need to supersede, you know, we're fine.
And then, then the other que, so the question is simply going to be, what is and is not permitted on those areas of land that we've put conservation easements on? Are we gonna be talking policy? Are we gonna be talking legalities? I don't want to be yelled at for, for a couple of hours. No, I mean, in all seriousness, that, that's why I don't want to have the interactive, both sides, they're just gonna yell, and we all, I mean, I, I'm pretty much entrenched on my position on this, and so, and everybody hates me for it, but my question is, what are we going to do? What is the point, other than getting yelled at?
So, I think there were a couple of things. I think, one, there was an executive session, and obviously there were folks after the executive session that said, indicated they wanted more information. Then we had the conservation easements that interacted with the top operating agreement, and that was another piece of the conversation. And then council directed staff to bring back a study session item on December 6th to look at where we are today, essentially. So, what we were, what we were planning to do is to have a presentation that started with the history of, you know, here's, here's where we started, here's where we ended up, here are the court cases.
Okay.
That recently came out and have the attorneys go over the court cases and the impact of the court cases, and then talk about what does that mean to us in terms of our current situation, then talk about the master contract that we have in place and what that means and what that looks like, and then just continue moving through that. So, it is a education.
A global, where are we now?
Now, based on what we're facing.
Okay, that's fair enough, okay.
And so, that, that was the intent staff met today to start sketching out that presentation. Then based on what we heard from the council was then after that study session, then there was another open forum conversation that you all would have and direct staff in how to proceed in that manner.
Great. Well, unfortunately, my father needs a liver transplant. I will not be there, just kidding, just kidding.
So, that's the way we understood it as staff, I would say, is if we misunderstood that direction, I think right now is a really good opportunity to, to confirm that, but that was the direction that we were moving.
Thank you.
I'll be there.
Okay, so let's start with public invited to be heard.
You got two more online.
Oh, excuse me, Councilmember Santos.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Harold, thank you for, that's exactly what I believe we all discussed. Now, regarding this, this individual that Councilmember Peck has suggested, I don't know who this person is. Again, I think it'd be good to have that person perhaps at the, not the study session, but the next one. That, again, that way we are all getting at that study session the same information, council, public, and anybody else. So, that, that was the pur, that's my understanding of the purpose. And then council can decide after that meeting to move forward with an open forum with other people presenting like we did with the, regarding the home grow regulations for marijuana. That's what I thought we agreed to.
Councilmember Christensen?
Well, since I'm the one who suggested it, the, the point is that, Councilman Bagley, that we all get the sa, that the public has an opportunity to listen to what we've heard insofar as it is possible for us just to discuss the legal issues, because they are mainly legal issues, some of which we can't discuss. But people, the citizens need to understand why, whether we can or cannot have a moratorium. They need legally, as of the decisions of the Supreme Court, whether we can or cannot change our regulations, whether we can or cannot make any changes to conservation easements. Those are all legal matters that have to come from the legal team and, and, and the city manager, too, about the history of how we got into these situations, so that everybody's has a chance to hear what we hear, and that's the point of it.
Can we, Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor. Would it be easier just to have maybe instead of a council meeting, we can sit in the audience and just have a presentation by Eugene on that? Do we have to, I mean, I can tell you the law, I can give that presentation right now, but, I mean, I guess, I just, do we have to take up a council session for that? Does it need to be this format?
Well.
Yeah, I, I mean.
We thought it'd be easier to do a study session than, than.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just saying that hearing another two-hour presentation on where we are with oil and gas, I have heard that from city staff more times.
Maybe they can do the condensed version.
Right, but then again, if, if the point is to have people hear what we've been told, I, I'm just saying that there's a pomp and circumstance in acting like we're listening and acting like we're learning when the reality is to educate the public. Anyway, I'm just saying, I'm game for whatever, doesn't matter.
We all agree, we all agree to it.
Okay, now it's time for public invited to be heard. James Kenworthy?
James Kenworthy?
Oh, sorry. There's a button right in front of you, James, on the other mic, on the mic, there you go.
Thank you. James Kenworthy, 107 Caribou Place, and it's K-E-N-W-O-R-T-H-Y. Kenworthy. Okay, I'm not gonna yell. I won't yell, but I want to talk about Union Reservoir and what's going on out there. See, the public doesn't know what's going on. The city council had an executive session a few weeks ago, and there's some kind of big secret that they don't want to, that we can't know about, and I don't understand what that is. But there is information about a pipeline. All right. Pipeline has two points. One point where something comes in, and one point where something comes out, goes out. So, let's refer to the inlet point as Point A. My question is, where's Point A? What's it gonna hook up to, and what's gonna flow through the pipeline? But no information about that. In Article 2, Section 3 of the Colorado Constitution, the people have the inadmissible right of enjoying and defending their lives and liberties of acquiring, possessing, and protecting property, and of seeking and obtaining safety and happiness. I have a hunch that this information that we don't know about is gonna violate this article. Under the Constitution, in this state, the people are sovereign, and the legislature is their agent. Okay, I'll wait. You need to listen to me, I got the floor. Article 5, Section 1, the people explicitly reserve the power to pass legislation for their community, independent of the General Assembly. This includes the right to apply the precautionary principle to any dangerous activity where the state does not. Anybody can call the Constitution up on their computer and look it up. The people passed legislation a few years ago regarding fracking within the city. Perhaps this information, is that a minute? One minute? Perhaps this information we don't know about will be used to violate the will of the people? If the city council allows in any way any activity that has been legislated against by the people, they're violating the state constitution and the city charter, and the Supreme Court ruled against the city, but the people were never in front of the Supreme Court. The Supreme Court has not ruled against the people, and there's a difference there. Thank you.
Mary Ann Riggi?
Being able to sit, I appreciate it. Mayor Coombs and city council members, my name is Mary Ann Riggi, and I live at 70 21st Avenue, Longmont, Colorado. I've been a resident. 21st Avenue, Longmont, Colorado. I've been a resident in Longmont for over two years. I wrote some notes. Mostly, I say what is on my mind and in my heart, and what I'd like to speak about tonight is, I don't have anything specific about ADA yet, but I'm researching it, American Disabilities Act, and what's concerning me the most right now is the lack of automatic door openers on the businesses and restaurants all up and down North Main Street. I don't know about South Main, I don't know about other streets, because I traverse mostly up North Main Street, that's near where I live. So my concern is that for myself and some of my friends, when we go to hold the doors open to get into a restaurant or a business, we have to use one arm, and I've done this, and hold the door, push the door and hold it open with one arm, and use the other arm and hand to push the walker or navigate the scooter into the building through the door. And many, can you hear me very well?
Yeah.
So many of, thank you, many of the, most of the restaurants and many of the businesses, they're very, they, they're up to code, I, I think, with other things, like inside, there's a lot of restrooms that have the automatic door openers, some of them don't. And what happens is when you go in this second door, then you have to do it again. So there's usually two doors, and I realized when I got to Colorado four years ago, these are probably fire doors, and they're needed because they're thick, and they protect the building and the people in it from fire or smoke. That's what I thought at the time, and I think that's what they are. They're real heavy, they're thick. So it's very painful and can be damaging to a person's arm, okay, or shoulder. So some, one of my friends is in a automated wheelchair, I won't say his name, but he's a very dear man, and he's paralyzed on one side, so he can't do this. It's impossible for him to do this. So he has to use one arm, if he's going to go in the building, to push on the door, pull it, and then someone has to help him. If he doesn't have a helper with him, which I often don't have a helper with me, then he can't get in unless somebody comes and offers to hold the door for him. So my, another point that I think is important is if the managers and owners of the buildings realize that if customers are helping the disabled get into the buildings and holding the doors for them, and stretching their arms out, which is often happens with people that help me, I'm concerned about them getting hurt, because they're stretching their arm like this and doing the best they can to hold the door open for me, and they could have their arm injured. So that's a real important point, too, I think. And that's all I have to say about that, and I want to always say positive things, because I think that there are so many good things, wonderful things about Colorado, okay? I love Colorado, okay? Am I done?
Thank you, yeah. Thank you, Mary Ann. Is there anyone else from the audience who'd like to speak at public invited to be heard? Okay, I guess we'll move on to our special reports and presentation, or, which we don't have any at this time, so we'll move on to the study session items.
Mayor Coons, your first agenda item is the discussion of options related to potential amendment to South Main Station redevelopment and reimbursement agreement, and David Starnes is here.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council, David Starnes with the city redevelopment manager. If it's okay with you, I would like to have the DDA board come up here as part of our discussion with the First and Main. Okay, thank you. So tonight I want to talk about some options related to a potential amendment to the South Main Station redevelopment and reimbursement agreement. As you may recall, the city of Longmont is carrying out the First and Main Transit Station Revitalization Plan, which was adopted by city council back in 2012. This plan serves as a general blueprint and guide to reinvestment within the First and Main area. A key catalyst project in this area is redevelopment of the former Butterball Turkey Plant into a mixed-use development. To facilitate the redevelopment of this key catalyst project, the city of Longmont and the Longmont Downtown Development Authority entered into a redevelopment and reimbursement agreement with the property owner, PFP Longmont Holdings I, in March 2015. While the developer continues to make progress on this project, they would like to request an extension to the RRA to extend the start of construction date from December 1, 2016 to December 31, 2017, to accommodate the application schedule for a federal HUD multifamily loan process. As part of initial staff discussions with the developer related to this proposed amendment request, they are willing to contribute an additional $400,000 towards the cost of keeping the rail crossing at First and Emery open to vehicular and pedestrian traffic. Maintaining a rail crossing open to all modes of transportation, including pedestrians and bicyclists, helps implement the goals of the First and Main Transit Revitalization Plan for improved access and connectivity within redevelopment area, including access to Dickens Farm Park as part of the master planning there. City council recently directed staff to explore options to keep the rail crossing open based in large part on public input gathered on this issue. An early estimate to improve the upgrade rail crossing was originally estimated at about $1 million. This is the number used in the RRA with the developer and the city sharing equally in the cost, 50/50. However, the latest design estimates to keep the rail crossing open is 1.8 million. This additional $400,000 contribution by the developer lowers the expected city cost to an estimated additional $400,000 pending final costs. So tonight staff seeks direction on the following related to the potential amendment, the three options. One is to direct staff to bring back an amendment to the RRA that extends the start of construction date to December 30, 2017, and includes the additional $400,000 contribution by the developer towards the First and Emery railroad improvements. Option two is to direct staff to bring back an amendment to the RRA with other options, and option three is do not amend the RRA and pursue termination of the agreement. So the council communication that you have as part of your packet details additional information on the developer's accomplishments to date, including the amount invested by both the developer and the city, and issues for discussion. I also wanted to point out that the DDA board a few weeks ago has already voted to extend the, the extension for start of construction, and they are here tonight to listen to the discussion and to answer any questions, and in particular, if things change, they may need to go back and have further discussions in terms of moving forward. So with that, I wanted to turn this over to Brian Baer. The developer has a brief presentation that he would like to share with you on, on the project vision and milestones accomplished to date, and we'll be able to answer any questions you have as well. Thank you.
Good evening, Brian Baer, 7552 North 83rd Street. Thanks for your time tonight. We've, I've got a couple of folks here from our group out of California, Drew and Talia with Mass Equities, and I just wanted to welcome them to town. They've been here many times, staff has met with them, and they wanted to come and show support for the project and, and continue our commitment for South Main Station. This, I've got just three or four slides here, real quick. I thought it would be important, most of you know where we're at with the project and what phase we're at, but I always think it's important to show the commitment that we've made to this project over the last two years and the milestones that we've met on many fronts to get Phase 1 of the project going, and that's really why we're here, is the vision of Phase 1, what do we create here at, at the main property, which is 150 Main? I'm told I just pushed this button, and things advance. Okay, gotta do it quick. Milestones and accomplishments. So many of you know these things, but again, I want to reiterate the commitment to the project and things we've done over the last, mainly the last 18 months. As all of you know, we've demolished a major structure there, the 400,000 square foot Butterball Factory, and during that process, we also completed the RRA that, that David mentioned earlier, which took several months and is pretty complicated, but does address all of the issues associated with Phase 1. We also renovated the 209 Emery Street Building, and that used to be an old truck maintenance building, and now it's called Whibi Brewing. Many of you maybe have been there, it's very successful and a great, a great start to that, that corner. We also, as I mentioned to you months ago, when we, when I was in front of you, we found some soils that we didn't like on the site, and we cleaned them up. We finished that cleanup in July and received a no further action letter from the state in August. That was quite a substantial project, but we, and it wasn't required, but we thought it was the best thing to do to clean up the site, particularly since we're going to have residential there. In the last 60 days, we've submitted our final site plan, our public improvement plan, and building permit submittals for three buildings, and those are going through the process right now with the, with staff, and we're hoping that we have final approval by the end of this month. That's our goal. We've also, you may not know this, we, there's a little yellow building, it's kind of an art deco building that sits on the northeast corner of Emery and Second. It's really a cool little building. It used to be a lab for Butterball. You probably don't want to know what went on in that lab, but there was a lot of testing for different things like mold and all kinds of stuff. It was bizarre when we took it over. We have a file in for, to renovate that building. We've got our pre-app in, and we're submitting, I think on the 15th of this month, the final package to rehab the building, and we're in discussions with a new restaurant to Longmont, is a really exciting concept, that would go in there and help generate some activity at the corner. So that's, that's, that's in process, and we expect to deliver that building in the spring to that tenant. Across the street from that, or actually across the parking lot from that, you all know, the old, it's an old Slits Brewery, Granery, actually, from the 1950s. That building, we've started the plans for that, and the concept there is to turn that into creative office, and so we have some concept plans going, and we plan on submitting some concepts to the city, hopefully by the end of the year, in the first quarter though, more likely. So that coupled with the yellow building really gets that third corner going, and I'll also show you an aerial of that. As, as David mentioned, we've agreed, assuming we can get an extension to participate further in the intersection at First and Emery, we think that's an important, important public sort of improvement to the area. And lastly, we've invested over $9 million into the project to date, and that's without any debt. We've done it all with cash. But we have had some challenges. I've discussed a lot of these with you from the beginning. We've been faced with challenges, which is typical in a project of this size, and particularly a redevelopment infill project, and I, I won't go through all of them, because I, we've talked about them, but the, the thing we're trying to accomplish now is get through the entitlements and get all that completed so that we have an approved project, and, and when the, when the, when the financing is approved, then we can go forward. So that's been another challenge of ours that we've talked about, is the financial markets have changed in the last, mainly in the last 60 to 90 days, and it's more and more difficult to get construction financing for apartments, and so we're looking at different and creative options. One of those options we're looking at, in addition to conventional financing, is financing, construction financing through HUD, and very attractive programs, but they take time to, to get approved. And the general timeline is somewhere between nine and 12 months. We've already started the process, and so if everything goes as planned, we will have two options. We could have a commercial option and a HUD option, which would then allow us to go vertical, we're hoping sometime next summer, July, August timeframe. And so we're asking for an extension through the end of the year. We don't think we'll need that, but we want to be prudent and make sure we give ourselves some time, because when dealing with HUD and some of the governmental agencies, you're not sure how long the process will take, and a lot of people are looking to those loans right now as the market has tightened, so we want to give ourselves plenty of time to go through that process. And I just want to end it on, and then certainly open it up for questions, the vision, because I, I think this is probably the most important thing that we all need to stay focused on is what we're trying to create here. And this is a large project, it's going to take some time, but it's a, it's a, it's a frame-breaking project and a catalyst project, as David mentioned. And to, to have these, this type of construction go vertical on this corner, it's really going to change the south side of town. This just shows Phase 1, you can see the, the phase, first phase of the apartments, that shows the five buildings, you've got Whibi Brewing, and then to the east you can see the Granery and the little yellow building, and that is technically our Phase 1 of the project. There's phases after that, as you know. Across Emery Street, you'll see the Phase 2 property, and then we've got another property that's down off of the New Boston Avenue, which is Phase 3. But our focus now is Phase 1, and to bring this project to the point where we can go vertical in 2017. So with that, I'll, happy to open it up for questions and answer anything you want to
Well, I guess my, my first question is, do you expect to get lower interest rates from HUD financing than conventional financing?
It's possible.
Okay.
It's possible. Nothing's been finalized yet, but it is possible.
Councilmember Peck?
Thank you. Brian, I'm really excited about, I have, from the very beginning, been really excited about this development, because it's everything that we want, not only for the transportation transit station, but for building up this whole urban area. But my question to you is, at what point, you knew that, you knew that the extension deadline was in December of 2016, at what point did you realize that you didn't have the financing?
Probably this summer, when we started talking about it with staff, and we, we started discussing different options that we were going to pursue, and that's really when the market changed. The market changed in the July, August timeframe.
And what does that mean, it changed? Did the interest rates go up? Did it become tighter?
No, lenders, you know, lending on different types of assets, apartments, office buildings, retail buildings, it goes in cycles. And over the last two years, there's been a lot of apartments built across the country and in Colorado. And so when that happens, what you see is you see the federal regulators come in, and they, they tighten lending with the, with, with the banks, and basically, they look at a balance of their portfolios and say, well, you have, you have too much in apartments. We want you to back off of lending on apartments for a while. And so when that happens on a broader range, it gets tight, it gets tougher to get loans, and so that's what's been happening over the last few months for the apartment sector. Doesn't necessarily track with office or retail, but it's really asset-specific. And so that really started happening, like I said, in the summertime.
So is the loan that you're pursuing through HUD at 221D4?
Correct.
It is, I've talked to a lot of people today, David's probably tired of listening to me, as is Harold, and, and I talked to Rick Garcia at the Denver HUD office. It is my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, that this HUD loan is basically insurance, and that you have to have a conventional loan to go with it. So you're going to be paying conventional loan rates as well as the HUD insurance rates of 3% to 4%. So is this HUD loan to insure the conventional loan? Is the conventional loan asking for you to get insurance? Is that what this is all about, because I'm very confused?
No, I think your structure's correct. So there are about 25 lenders across the country, names you've, Wells Fargo, we're working with Burkadia, that, that are lenders for HUD. Well, they're lenders for themselves, but the HUD program basically insures about 99% of that loan.
So it isn't, it is not HUD money?
It's an insurance product.
It's an insurance, that's what I was wondering. Okay, so my other question is, with the conventional loan financing and the HUD insurance financing, are you going to have an interest rate that you can work with? Are we going to come back again and ask for another extension?
Oh, we certainly hope so. I mean, the, the HUD program is, in terms, are much more stable than the, than the commercial market. So when you approach it with them and you lock in your terms, and you go through the process, you know, once you're approved, you're going to get those terms. And that could take six to nine months.
So the conventional bank has to be one that works with HUD? Is that correct?
They're, they're, they do conventional loans as well. Most of the banks that, that do HUD loans also do conventional loans.
Okay. So I'm, I'm, I'm very disappointed that we're not going to a groundbreaking ceremony for this development. Instead, we're extending it another year. Let me see, I had a couple of more questions here. Oh, when I looked through our packet and I saw that, the things that you were going to consider, direct staff to bring back, da-da-da-da, at the very bottom, the second to the last bullet point, you said, owner provides some portion of affordable housing in the future development phases. Some portion, what exactly does that mean? It's so open-ended. Are you not going to commit?
Yeah, and just to be clear, those weren't suggestions that I brought to the table, those were, those were suggestions that, that staff.
It's a good one.
Wrote into the, into the, into the brief, yeah. We don't know, but we're open to discussing it for future phases. We know we're going to have residential in future, future phases, and it We know we're going to have residential in future, future phases, and it, there's going to be a substantial amount of residential. As, as I've said from the beginning with the plan, the three phases, we see a for rent, a for rent product, which is what we're doing in phase one. We see a multifamily-for-sale product in the future, and we see a single-family-for-sale product. So we see a lot of different types of housing, which we think is, you know, a big part of our design and our strategy to help get the south, south part of town going. So there'll, there'll be opportunities to discuss that in later phases.
Okay, because one of the reasons that I'm very interested in it, not, not just because Longmont needs it, but we are planning that transportation station, and funding through Dr. Cog and other organizations depend upon that being affordable and below certain, below MIA to get their funding. So that's one of the reasons I keep pushing for that. So keep that in mind, please.
I understand.
Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. So in reading the packet, it talks about the fiscal impact, but the fiscal impact is talking about whether we agree to an extension or not, the 1.8 million's going to be there no matter what, correct?
The 1.8 million for-
The First and Emery crossing.
So we-
So before it was going to be a million, split 50/50.
Correct.
And it went to 1.8. That has nothing to do with the delay, correct?
No. It, it had, it, it is a more complicated project that requires other signal lights and other pieces into play, which increase the cost. Part of that was working with the P, you know, getting the designs and everything ready so we could get agreement from the PUC. That information is now in with BNSF, because they have to be part of it, and they have to construct it and move forward. Is that correct?
Right, but we'd have to pay for that anyway. Even if today he said, you know what, we're going to move forward with the project, we're, we're breaking ground on January 1st, that's still money. That 1.8's the cost, regardless of, of delays, year, now, whatever, correct?
Correct.
All right, so my question is, what is the financial delta? What are we out? What's the downside of just saying, all right, you can wait a year? Is there any at all? Because I can't see any.
So we have approximately $600,000 that was based, so if you remember-
That's already in, some cost?
Yeah. That's what we put in, but if you remember the redevelopment agreement, we had certain thresholds. One of the thresholds was the demolition of the plan itself, and at that, they received what we then thought was 50% of the overall demolition cost, which was 1.2. So we have funded $600,000. And, and if you recall, one of council's discussions during that period is, is if we get it demolished and we have a developable site, that is, that's good for our community at the same time.
We haven't given them the money until completion.
We've given them 600,000, we've given them a portion of it.
Right.
Now, I think what's important in this equation too, is the demolition cost actually went up to $2 million.
Okay.
Because of the environmental cleanup and everything. But we're still only reimbursing 1.2 million by contract, but we've only given the developer at this point $600,000.
Right, but if-
If we look to the future, so then what we will have to evaluate, and, and this is some of the conversation, so we went ahead in the budget process and allocated the full $1.3 million for the construction of First and Emery to make 1.8. They, the developer had $500,000. Total cost was 1.8 million. In the budget process, we allocated the remaining dollars for First and Emery, not knowing what was going to happen. With the additional $400,000, that reduces the city's obligation from 1.3 back to $900,000, so it's a 50/50 split. Obviously, and how that is brought to bear and funded, there could or could not be potential liabilities in the future, and it would be our desire to reduce those liabilities or the potential for a liability as much as possible.
But, again, but that's there whether we do it now and follow the original plan or wait. Everything you said is-
Correct, unless it's not, correct, unless it's not, unless the project's not built, and then you have a choice of whether you do it or not, but-
Right, right. But we're not talking about not building the project, we're just-
Right.
So essentially what I'm hearing, and you did a great job explaining that, yes, the project will cost money, but we decided to do that before. Now the delta is, what we decided before, and the request is a year, doesn't sound like there's any, other than just not adhering to the original plan, it doesn't, doesn't sound like there's a downside fiscally at all for just letting the builder take an extra year. Am I missing something?
Correct, unless you assume that you lose the potential tax revenue generated. So I'm, I'm just going to be very transparent on this.
Right, so, yeah, right, so you're losing the tax revenue for a year.
You're losing the tax revenue from the project, so there, there is a loss.
Unless he doesn't build the project as a result of not giving him the year.
And then, you know, 100% is zero, zero, so.
Right, okay, all right. I'm inclined to support it. Thanks.
And, you know, it seems like you're pretty pregnant with this project, having $9 million. And generally, you know, it's my experience, when people have that much skin in the game, they're not going to fail. I mean-
At least it's on you.
So just an observation. Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Yeah, there, it's, our obligations are there, but I guess the question I have is not for you, Brian, it's for more staff, I guess for both of you. When can we start on First and Emery? Because the only thing I can see is that 1.8 escalating to much more money. So when can we potentially get that done? Keep it at 1.8?
So I may have to have Dale come down to help me with the ti, the timing on this. I know we're still waiting on final agreement from BNSF, because they have to construct it, and that, the design is with them.
Right.
And we're getting final costing and everything from BNSF as we move forward, so obviously that's a piece of it. Here's the other piece of it where, and Dale can probably speak to this more eloquently, but one of the things, the timing on this project and when we can actually construct it, and not having things bump up against each other, is, is also a potential bene- so obviously, we all want to see this built now, but it may allow us to have a more effective construction schedule and timing in terms of the building of that intersection, because it's going to be significant. Three railroads, multiple gates, traffic signals, it, it's going to be a pretty big project. Dale?
Hi, Dale. Dale Radamaker, General Manager of Public Works. A couple of thoughts. So as Harold said, I, and I mentioned this to him in the past, the, you know, the delay's not good, but if it allows the intersection to be rebuilt and safe before you have a lot of people trying to cross it, that's maybe not a bad thing. With regards to the funding, the city did fund the additional $800,000 of the street fund, but that is also relying on $500,000 from the developer, which we will need sooner than later, once we go to construction on the project. And so we'll have to probably address that as we go forward with the revised agreement. As Harold mentioned, the plans have been turned into Burlington Northern. It's Burlington Northern's property. They build the actual railroad crossing, and so they are now calculating, calculating their design, looking at our design that Mueller Engineering did for us. They have up to 60 days to do that review. And then we'll go to the PUC. I estimate that to be late this year, early January. I don't see any big issues with the PUC. I think if the railroad and the city come together on this crossing upgrade, I think it's really a, more of a formality for the PUC to approve, as opposed to say a closing of the intersection, so. So if that all plays out, then we're on to Burlington Northern's timeline to actually get the railroad crossing improvements built. My experience is, is sometimes the railroad's quick, sometimes they're not, but we are doing everything we can to stay in contact with them and keep it moving along.
Well, you would think they would want to get that done as quickly as possible, that's-
In their interest as well.
Yeah, it's-
Safety.
To have the lights and the, all the bells and whistles there to, to make it actually a safer crossing is for everybody. Thanks, Dale. I do recall Brian saying a while back that when this, when this was first proposed, that in later phases, affordable could still be an option. And with the, the fund that we, the council keeps funding, hopefully in later phases, you'll take advantage of that as well. Just a suggestion, as Councilmember Peck brought up, but there's, there is some money to do some of that as well, some, some affordable in later phases. Yeah, it, it's disappointing to see that we, we can't hit this deadline, but unfortunately, like another big project here in town, sometimes delays happen, and sometimes for the better. So I'd be in favor, just, you know, with, with the extension as well.
Councilmember Peck?
Thank you. I do have a question about the water tap fee. Didn't we have a three-year agreement on that? And is that going to be extended as well?
I don't think we're up against the timeline on that.
It wasn't three years? Did I get that wrong?
There were multiple, multiple phases of, of the water tap. There was a piece where we had an ordinance based on the capacity that existed at the, the main location. I believe they had two eight-inch taps at that location. They then had the ability to allocate that out to the other parcels of the property that they owned. That, that's in play, and that has been allocated. The piece on, on the tap issue and the water credits is that any of the designs on the future sections have to come to council for approval in order to get that capacity allocated on that piece. And then in terms of the timeframe, Dale, I'm going to have to bring you back down because I can't remember the, the exact pieces on the timeframe, in terms of answering your question.
Dale Radamaker, so on the, I think Harold's got everything right on the, on the tap agreement. The allocation has been made. Brian and his group met the requirement to make that allocation within the timeframe stipulated in the tap credit agreement. With regards to timeframe, these two are linked, and so as we amend the RRA, we just need to be mindful of the, of the tap credit agreement to make sure that we don't get into a bind, but I don't anticipate that being a problem.
Okay. Don't go away, Dale. I have another question for you. As I've said before, my frustration with this First and Emery is that it's costing a lot of money, and we're putting a lot, a lot of time and effort for people that we assume are going to live in these buildings once they get built. And we've had residents in this whole city for years, asking us to do something about railroad crossings. And so that's my frustration with extending this and putting so much effort into First and Emery. And when I mentioned that, Dale, you said that you had applied for a $6 million grant for quiet zones, and it, can you give us an update on that?
Latest and greatest that I know, Councilmember Peck and Mayor Coombs, I'm sorry. The latest update I have on that is that we are applying for grants. I believe some are going out towards the end of this year, similar to what City of Loveland did. I, I believe one we're going after is the Tiger Grant. And our strategy, as we talked to you about during the budget, and I think during an update on, on this particular issue, maybe on the CIP, is that we intend to bring forward our investment in the First and Emery crossing as the local match for the balance of the grant. And that was an important part of the strategy, because you have to show local dollar match. And we also put money in the 2017 budget to do additional grants next year. And so we are pursuing those grants. As soon as, as soon as we find one, we'll do it.
So, so to answer, to specifically answer that, we're applying for the DOLA Energy and Mineral Impact Assistance Grant, and we're asking for the maximum of $2 million on that grant, and the application deadline is December 1st of this year. We're also pulling the information together for the Tiger Grant, which is the $6 million grant. On the DOLA grant, there's a 25% match, and on the Tiger Grant, there's a 20% match. And as Dale indicated, what we're looking at is capturing these dollars to essentially serve as the match on those grants, so we don't have to come out with any additional local dollars in order to, to fund these projects.
So the reason I asked is that, since it looks like we will get an answer on these grants from FRA, is it possible to delay the First and Emery and not put any money in, to that, to see if we can get money from the grants to put into that? I, I don't see any reason why we should be putting money into this First and Emery development until we make sure that Brian actually gets funds for it.
But isn't that our match amount? I mean, you have to spend money to get the grants.
No.
If, if I could, I, I, I think, I understand what you're saying, Councilmember Peck. A couple of thoughts on that. One would be, we know that the timing on when we go to construction is, is at this point going to be controlled by both the PUC and the railroad. You know, if council wants, we can certainly return back to you before we pull the trigger to get underway. It does take some time to get these things built, though, and so I believe there's inherently some risk to the city if we do it in advance, but I also believe that it's a crossing improvement that will benefit the city in the long term. And as the mayor mentioned, it will constitute a local match, whether we build it earlier or later, for the future grant obligations.
Okay, thank you. I would like to hear what Kimberly has to say about, what LDDA thinks about this extension.
Mayor Coombs and Councilwoman Peck, you know, about the railroad improvements, or just the whole project? Certainly, it's a project that we have been very excited about, that we think will be transformational in an area of our downtown, that we would really like to see thrive. As well, we are extremely disappointed that it will be another year, but that being said, we certainly want to work with the developer to have the, the quickest path of getting this site redeveloped. And they have put so much time and effort into it, that certainly, that we think that this is the best route. It's still a good project that we strongly believe in. I think keeping the access open of the railroad is, is the right decision in making that improvement, because I think downtown's just going to grow, and our whole district goes all the way from Martin to First on this corridor, and there's so much potential in other phases. And so certainly, we want to be supportive and do as much as we can to get this going as quickly as possible. I don't know if anyone wants to add anything?
I think it's unanimous.
Yeah. Councilmember Christensen?
I just wanted to ask a question of, I guess, Mr. Baer and also Mr. Radamaker, about the railroad, about the crossing down at Emery. This isn't, in building stuff, sometimes this has to be built before this. If you build this, if you build this first, then you have to rip up the other thing to- this isn't, if we went ahead and started, should a miracle occur, and we have the money and the movement forward to be able to fix the Emery and First intersection, that wouldn't create a problem for your subsequent building, would it?
No.
Okay, that would be good.
To provide additional information based on Councilmember Peck's question, we were, I was verifying some dates. We think that we probably, we will get approval from the PUC, hopefully February of next year. And then, then we have to work with BNSF in terms of typically what they say, what Nick indicated, say, we can do it, but we need to get all of the parts and all the equipment in, and that's going to take some time. So what we can do from a staff perspective for council is, you know, we'll watch the timing, but it, it should match up fairly close to the timing that, that Mr. Baer indicated in terms of what he was looking for. But we, we can check back with council and say, okay, here's where we are in this process. We need to decide whether or not we need to pull the trigger on this, so we can move forward. Chances are, based on the information they provided recently, it's probably, we probably won't be finished with the project until late next year, based on everything you have to go through to get it started. Because there's also timing with the railroad, so when they're pulling their cars through and what impact that's going to have on them, there's just a lot of pieces there.
Councilmember Moore?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Well, I definitely think that, that this would be a good project for Longmont, and Brian and I have talked about it. It's kind of disappointing to run into this, it is, you know, after the amount of effort that your company's put into it, and I really want to make sure that we move forward with this, because I think it is like the catalyst project that'll, that'll spur more development down there. Chris is shaking his head like, yeah, it's for a cross from my store, so. So I, I think the purpose of this discussion was to make sure that we- So, I, I think the purpose of this discussion was to make sure that we, from my perspective, I'm not gonna want to kill this redevelopment. I think we're running into one of those things where redevelopment is hard, and we have to accept that, you know, there's some delays, and there's been some surprises, and up to now, Brian's company's covered the cost of those delays. I mean, it's not like, it's not costing them money either. So I'd like to make sure that we keep this thing alive. As far as the railroad crossing, it sounds like the development financing will come in in about the time, the potential time for us to redevelop that crossing. And so that would be, you know, we can get everything kind of tied up in one package, hopefully in next summer. So with that said, I just think we need to direct staff to come back with a new redevelopment agreement or modify this one and to allow extra time for the developer to put this together.
I'll second that.
Councilmember Finley?
I was also going to, to, or move that we direct staff to bring back option one with the extension. With big projects, sometimes there's big problems, and I, time is money more so for him than it is for us. So I know he'll get it done as quickly as he can, and as quickly as it's possible. So I, I'm in favor of moving forward.
All right. Let's vote.
If I can add one more piece, just another question was asked, the timing on the water rates. There are dates associated with it, but it's out at 2025, and it's for Phase Two and Three, and that came into the other pieces that I discussed in terms of approval of those development plans. So it's out in time.
Okay. So you've got a motion, it's been seconded, let's vote.
Okay, that passes seven to zero.
Thank you, and we'll be back in a couple weeks as soon as possible with the amendment.
Okay.
Good luck, Brian.
Mayor Combs, your next agenda item is the St. Verane floodplain changes, and Nick Wolfram or Dale Radamaker looks like is here.
Be either one. Counsel and mayor, Dale Radamaker, general manager of Public Works and Natural Resources. So tonight, what we wanted to do was to give the council quite a bit of information, actually. First, we want to talk with you about and keep you up to date on everything we're doing on the Resilient St. Verane project. We also then wanted to talk with you about some of the recent floodplain mapping effort that's going on, and then also to give you a sense of costs and stretches of the river and how those are working out so far. And so as I mentioned, the main thing that, the main message is that we are moving from recovery and the emergency recovery projects, which we launched right after 2013, now to the more resiliency types of projects that protect us in the future. There is one sort of major recovery project still underway, and that's the, the new bridge over the spillway up at Ralph Price Reservoir, which is underway. The abutments have been poured and the girders are on the way, so I expect that bridge to be built over the winter, and it'll be sort of cool to go up there and sort of celebrate that, because that really will represent the, the final recovery of our water system up in the Ralph Price area. But we are moving into resiliency, and that's something that council has directed us consistently since 2013 to really sort of not accept that we have a river channel that can't carry a flood without flooding the city, and that we wanted to have a better future for our community. So we're gonna also update you on some of the accomplishments that have happened to date, the changes in the flows, which I know you've heard from us, but we think it's important to stay on that message so that the public understands the differences and the changes that are occurring, that are now impacting the floodplain mapping, project funding, funding that we're gonna talk about, and what we understand now and how far we need to get up the river to really make a big change in the floodplain in the core of the city. And then lastly, the Clomars, which is the conditional letter of map revision, which is a FEMA process, that letters have gone out to all the property owners in the affected area that are gonna be impacted by City Reach One of the Resilient St. Verane Project. So we will do that fairly quickly, and feel free to interrupt as we go through, but I'm gonna turn it over to Nick to go through the details on that, and then really want to make sure that we're giving you a good update.
Good evening, Mayor Combs, members of council. Nick Wolfram, the Director of Engineering Services with Public Works and Natural Resources. And as Dale said, yes, we're moving from resiliency to recovery, and if you've been out on the greenway, we've updated our signs to reflect that and to explain what we're doing. A lot of work has occurred since 2013 in the flood, and we actually started on some of this prior to the flood. Some of you may remember discussing this at 2012 council retreats and before that. One of the major steps that had to be undertaken was an incredible amount of permitting and front-end work, as much if not more than I've seen on any other project here in Longmont. And that's probably, not probably, it is, it's reflective of the sensitive area that we're working in and, and the large coordination with a lot of different agencies. We've finished the NEPA environmental assessment for the entire reach from Sandstone to Airport Road and received our Fonzie on that, our finding of no significant impact. The FEMA was the lead agency on that. We also included reviews by the Environmental Protection Agency, U.S. Fish and Wildlife, Colorado Parks and Wildlife, the State Historic Preservation Office, and the public. There was public involvement that was allowed in that process. Dale mentioned, we've updated the existing conditions floodplain map, and we're gonna talk a lot about that this evening, because the state's in the process of doing what's called the CHAMP program, that Colorado Hazard Mapping Program, where they're updating the flood, flood mapping on not only the St. Verane, but on a lot of different creeks on the, on the Colorado Front Range. But ours has, is already in and has been submitted and is being reviewed and is almost complete with FEMA's review. We've completed the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers 404 permits for the Sandstone Reach and City Reach One. Both of those turned out to be individual permits, not nationwide permits. Those permits were in the Army Corps offices for a year, and there were a lot of drives down to South Denver to, to work through those issues and get that straightened out, but we have received those permits. One that we have never, that I'm aware of, had to deal with before is, and this was a good one to go through, the Colorado Parks and Wildlife, what's called the Senate Bill 40. And Senate Bill 40 reflects the fact that there is state funding in this. The state is funding half of the local match, 12 and a half percent of, of the 25% local match for that flood recovery funding. And so since the state is involved in that, you go through the Senate Bill 40, and that has a review and approval by Colorado Parks and Wildlife on all the work we're doing through there, and we've received that from them. We've also worked significantly with Boulder County, Weld County, and other local agencies on, on this. Some of the major projects that we've completed, obviously the Sunset Street Bridge replacement. And as we were looking at this today, Dale pointed out something that I thought was kind of interesting when you look at these two side-by-side pictures, because this is, that's the old Sunset Street Bridge from there to there. What it did was go out and tear out the road around it and created a new width. The old river was really, was not really, was only that wide, and the new river is this. And as you can see, this new bridge covers that entire stretch, and so the river kind of decided what it needed there, and we worked to match that. This project was incredibly challenging, because it included every layer of government you can get to. Local with Longmont, that bridge is in Boulder County still. Our agreement with Boulder County is that we will annex it after completion of the work, and so we will be looking to annex that reach of Sunset Street. But Boulder County, CDOT, the state was involved, and the Federal Highway Administration, which ultimately had the funding. It is designed to pass the new updated 100-year flood flows, and we'll talk more about those later this evening, but that was one of the challenges that we faced in that, because the bridge design was underway, and then the state updated and increased the flood flows. So it actually had a change in that, and we had to go back to the Federal Highway Administration and explain to them that we needed to increase the span of the bridge and convince them that they should be funding that, which they did. And a lot of partnership and great work with Boulder County. And besides the flood issues, one of the great things about that project was we were able to add sidewalks and bike lanes to that bridge. It's a much safer facility now than it was, and we're gonna be continuing to work with Boulder County on enhancing the multimodal aspects of that whole Sunset Street corridor. We actually, I know it was challenging for the community, because everybody wanted it done much sooner than it was, but we actually are going down next Monday. Colorado Chapter of APWA is awarding Longmont their, their annual award for the category of disaster or emergency construction on this project. And Tom Caparella and our project inspector, Bill McNeil, will be going down there for The pictures here are great, because you can see the city council with your partners from Boulder County, who were, who were there to, to, to get the new bridge opened up when we did that. Upstream from here, the St. Verane Greenway from Sunset to Rogers Grove, that was a FEMA flood recovery project. We, we had committed to having that done by rhythm on the river this year, so people could walk and bike up there to get there, and we barely made it, but we did. And that's been a great project. One of the aspects of that is the, was the replacement of the new bridge over there, which was actually a reuse. That is an interim bridge. Ultimately, in the farther upstream reaches of this project, that, that section of the channel will be widened, and a newer bridge will be put in there. But we actually took one of the bridges that was washed out in the City Reach One downstream of Main Street and moved that up there and have used that as a reuse in the interim for that. The, kind of the resiliency issue of, of this section of trail that we did, I'm sure some of, many of you were out there, and as you walked up through there, you saw a lot of this old trail, particularly in this reach right here that was laying in the creek, creek bed, and was washed out. We pulled the creek, or the new trail farther away from the creek, and that did a couple of different things. One, that allows for expansion of the creek with future upstream reaches of the Resilient St. Verane Project. It also gives us a little bit more buffer environmentally from wildlife and along the creek, and has provided for a great design through there, and that is open in a very popular and well-used section of the greenway that the community is, I'm sure, very glad to have open again. Another one that we'll be very glad to have open again is the Main Street Bridge. It's nearing construction. We finished setting the last of the girders in there, and they are busy tying steel on the bridge decks. We will be pouring the bridge deck on the east side of the bridge about mid-November, just the next couple of weeks. By the end of November, we should have four lanes open to traffic. We still will be working probably through the end of the year off on the side on railings, various aspects of it, the, the balusters on the side, on the downstream side, on the, on the east side. After we get finished with that, we are working with Art and Public Places, which is gonna be installing some great new art on top of those, and it will become a great entryway for that lower corridor of the, of the downtown area. One of the exciting projects that we have getting ready to get started is we have awarded construction for the Sandstone Reach, the first section of the PAP, the really the first section of the Resilient St. Verane Project to go under construction. Construction's gonna start later this month. We're actually, and everybody has been invited to join the mayor for Bike and Learn, we're gonna be going out for a ride along the trail this, this Friday, and the weather's supposed to be absolutely gorgeous. So we'll be starting at noon behind Pinocchio's, if people would like to come and, and see that, and we'll be riding down the City Reach and out toward Sandstone Ranch and take a look at that. The, this project's gonna take quite a bit of time. We're gonna start construction in 2000, November 2016, the end of this year. It will go through all of next year, and it will be into probably fall of 18 as we finish the plantings. One of the reasons why construction's gonna take a long time out there is we're faced with the challenges of working in a very environmentally sensitive area. We have ego closures that we have to deal with. Some of them are moving around on this right now, and new nests are going on. There are fish spawning times that we're, that we're working around, and one of the commitments that we made on this project was to do this in an environmentally sensitive manner as we could, and we are. The primary work out at Sandstone Ranch Reach is different from the City Reaches. It's not flood protection. It's reestablishing our greenway connection out to Sandstone Ranch, and then doing some establishment to protect some, some buffering, to protect some of the infrastructure, some of the roads that are out there from future floods. Other than that, that area is evolving as the, with, as nature recuperates from the flood, and it's been fascinating to watch. City Reach One is out to bid right now. We had a very successful pre, pre-bid meeting, mandatory pre-bid meeting, and purchasing, did a great job of getting a lot of contractors involved in this project. This is a project that is involved not just engineering by any stretch of the imagination. It's been great to work with a lot of different members of the, the Longmont staff on this. Our bid opening is scheduled for November 22nd, and the City Reach One is from the left-hand Creek Confluence up to Main Street. It is, a lot of that is being done in conjunction with the development of the adjacent Dickens Farm Nature Area, and the combination of the creek and that nature area are gonna make a, a really incredible way for the community to access down to the creek that I don't think has ever existed before in Longmont. I think it's gonna be great to see. You know, in this area, you can see, this is one of those areas where this is the old creek alignment through here. It blew into one of those ponds. It's gonna stay in that pond. That's where the creek moved to, and we're gonna leave it there as it comes along. This pond, as you can see in this, and this is an older area planning graphic of the, the nature area, this is actually gonna be filled. A lot of that large pile of material that's been stockpiled down there that came out from under the Main Street Bridge, we're gonna be filling this area, this pond in there. It was, we were gonna have to fill most of it anyway to protect it from washout and having the same sort of breach that occurred on this pond, and felt like with the development of the park, it was better to just fill the entire pond, so that will be done as part of that project. Dale talked about the fact that one of the things that we talked to council about was looking to find additional financial partners in this effort, and that's gonna be critical for us. We've been successful on several to date. Obviously, our FEMA partners with our Public Assistance Altsorities Procedures Project, that major funding from flood recovery, it's 28 million. We received a grant for, from the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment for $280,000 for bank stabilization work adjacent to the wastewater treatment plant to protect the plant. That's already been done. We received a FEMA HMGP grant. The council approved the, signed off on that a few weeks back for $1.8 million. That's part of the grading and river protection downstream of Martin Street, once again to help protect the, the wastewater treatment plant. Some of the others that we're pursuing, we had a kickoff meeting last week with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. Council approved a, an agreement with the Army Corps earlier this year, earlier this year for their 205 program. And they'll be doing an analysis of the section of the creek from Sunset Street, or no, actually from the BNSF Railroad, excuse me, up to Lykan's Gulch, and reviewing that and looking at that section, which we've already done a lot of preliminary design, conceptual level design work on that'll help that, move that along. But they're gonna be looking at that in hopes of establishing a $10 million 205 project that would come in, and particularly looking at that section above the BNSF Railroad Bridge, and we'll talk more about the importance of this reach later on, up to Boston Avenue Railroad, or Boston Avenue Bridge over the St. Verane. The Boston Avenue Bridge is in the CIP, is a funded project in the CIP that you just approved for 2017, I believe. Another area of funding that's gonna be important for us to look at, and I'm not sure what I just did, did I touch something that I shouldn't have? Let's see if I can get rid of those. There we go. I'll put that down, is round three of the CDBGDR funding, and we're gonna be pursuing funding in round three. We've been successful in receiving funding in, in round two, but it will be critical to get round three funding, and we'll be working with the Boulder County Collaborative on that. In addition, we're working with Dr. Cog, BNSF, and RTD as potential partners for the replacement... working with Dr. Cog, BNSF, and RTD as potential partners for the replacement of the BNSF Railroad Bridge. That is one of the major constraints on the creek that causes us a lot of problems and has to be replaced, no different than Main Street, and we saw that small 140-foot span turned into a very wide one. The same thing needs to happen with BNSF Railroad Bridge, and we're working with them as it relates to fast tracks and the protection of the transit station, which Councilman Preck brought up earlier this evening, and the importance of how that will work to protect that and to also create a bridge structure that will allow for the future commuter rail extension to Longmont. Flood plane changes. The 100-year flood, we had a 100-year flood in 2013, and that does not mean that the next one will be in 2013. The 100-year flood is the flood that has a 1% chance of happening any given year, can happen multiple times in a year. It really is the flood that has been developed over the years as kind of the balance between protecting the community and being not overly stringent with regulations or costs. We had people that asked, well, if we had over 100-year storm, why aren't we designing for a 500-year storm? This is the one that is that balance between. And quite honestly, if we have a channel that addresses the 100-year storm, if we had a 500-year storm, the impact would be significantly less to us because it's not that five times greater than that. CWCB, following the 2013 flood, Colorado Water Conservation Board and CDOT actually worked on updating the hydrology of not only St. Vrain Creek, but a lot of different creeks up and down the front range, Boulder Creek, South, Little Thompson, Big Thompson, thank you, Dale. So they've redone a lot of that. The hydrology has been increased, and the definition of the 100-year storm on St. Vrain Creek has gone from 10,000 cubic feet per second, which was the 100-year storm flows at the time of the flood, to 15,500, a 50% increase in what those flood flows were. That's at Main Street, and that's the flow that hits Main Street and up to South Pratt Parkway and the BNSF Railroad Bridge. Above that, it drops down to about 13,500. But, so there's been a significant increase. We had actually started the design of the Main Street Bridge prior to the 2013 flood, and we're designing that around the 10,000 CFS numbers. When we got these new numbers and went in and told that design team, bad news. The new flows are 15,000. We've got to have a bigger bridge. And we were able to update that. And because of that work that was done, we've gotten that done, and our new bridges are being designed, were designed and are being constructed to pass those flows. Following that, the CHAMP project, Colorado Hazard Mapping, CWCB, FEMA adopted those new flood flows. Now they're coming in and redoing the flood mapping. They're going to be reestablishing firm maps, the flood insurance rate maps. And so as you can imagine, with higher flows comes higher, larger flood planes, deeper flood planes that are coming through here. And that's going to have a significant impact, not only on Longmont, but on other communities up and down the front range. We're fortunate, we're ahead of the curve on this because following the flood, our design team did the mapping with those new flows of Longmont. We just got the draft, the first iteration of the rest of the St. Vrain Creek Monday morning. We went down and met with them last Friday in Boulder, and we've just got that. They're taking our map that we've already done, our model, and inserting it in that. They're using our model for that. But because we went out ahead of that, otherwise we'd have been waiting till today to even get started on the design work. So we're several years ahead of where they were with doing that. But that will have impacts, and that's that letter that we sent out, and we sent you all an email that went out to several people on that. We spend a lot of time talking about the 100-year storm. It's good to remember that it's not just the 100-year storm that causes us problems. We talked about it after the flood. Post-flood, about 3,500 cubic feet per second is all the capacity that we've got to get through town. Above that, and we are flooding, 10-year storms, 10-year storm flow is about 3,400 CFS. 25-year storm flow, 4% chance of happening, 6,000 CFS. So it's not just, we're not just trying to protect Longmont from a 100-year storm. It's from those other interim storms that are going to occur and have great impact to the community. This is a map that I think most of you have probably seen before. The light blue shading represents the existing conditions, the existing conditions, which is that the flood plane, the 100-year flood plane that would exist, that does exist actually, with those new flows that range from about 13,500 up to 15,500 through Longmont. This is the model that, and it actually, you're seeing it down to left-hand, it runs, we've done the work to carry it all the way out through Sandstone to Highway 119. This is the section that they will be inserting with their model. We're working with them right now, with CWCB, their consultant, and with Boulder County because we're working on this match area up here, east of town, we're just out west of town, excuse me, thank you, Dale, right out by Heron Lake Channel, where we have to match up with theirs. And so working to see how those two are going to match up is going to be important, as is the work that Boulder County is still working on, on repair of those breaches upstream that caused so much problem for Longmont and so much damage during there. So we're going to be working with them up in this area. It is a very, very complicated flood plane. And one of the things that exists here, if you look, this is Main Street right here, and actually in about 2010, we did what was called the Anderson Study and updated, and at that time, we came to council and the community and said, the existing flood insurance rate maps are not right. They show that these flows come down and go underneath Main Street and don't overtop Main Street. So right now, this area, if you look at what would be called the regulatory mapping, this area in here is not in the flood plane. It actually is, but it's not in the regulatory. If these property owners went in to get a mortgage, they would not be told that they had to get flood insurance. Our information to them is you should be getting flood insurance because you are in the flood plane. And that's the information that we gave to the public before the 2013 flood and are still doing here. But I talked about that CHAMP project. That is not going to complete those map changes until about 2019 is their current schedule. They have to go a very lengthy process to get through and make those adjustments. Those new flood plane maps are not going to be done until about 2019. So it makes it some interesting challenges to us as we're working in this flood plane. We're comparing ourselves really to the existing conditions, that flood plane that we know actually exists. And we talk about this area down in through here. This is-
Councilmember Preck?
Sorry to interrupt you.
No.
The area, you mentioned it before, the area between Hoover and west of Hoover, and not clear to airport, but perhaps to the waterfall, that area of the St. Vrain, we are, are you consider widening that? Or are there the other option of channeling it through the ponds and under Hoover?
Both of those. I would say that his staff has looked at that. What we're talking about out here, there are several, and this is a good segue, because there are several areas of split flows that make this a real challenging flood plane. A lot of this water is not water that's coming out of the creek in places because it's overtop the road. It's water that's trying to get back to the creek.
Right.
And that's the challenge. And what you brought up is the question of saying, we looked at two different options in this reach out here from Lichens Gulch out to Sunset. And one of them was to widen this existing channel to carry those 13,000 CFs flows. The other was to create an overflow channel that would come down here so that we would not have to do as much disruption to the existing channel and to come down here. That is part of what the Army Corps has looked at. When we had our kickoff meeting the other day, I told them that based on the input that we had received and our review of it, you know, our really preferred alternative is that split flow. We think that will actually work better and be lesser disruptive for the community.
Is that basically the old path that the St. Vrain took, or?
You know, my guess is the St. Vrain, if you go back, is wandered around all over this area, you know? And when you look out at Sandstone Ranch, that's the amazing thing. That creek's moved a quarter mile now. And I'm sure that when you go back over the last hundreds and thousands of years, that creek moved up and down around through this area.
Okay. Thank you.
This is the, as we come up through here, we also have the BNSF Railroad that comes through, am I on that, Dale? Right there. And this area in through here, one of the important things there, we had always been under the previous understanding, and it was based on those previous flows. When we had a 10,000 CFS flow, we always said, if we get above the BNSF Railroad Bridge, that will facilitate us taking this area out of the flood plane. Because right now, since these flows can't get under the BNSF Railroad, they back up, actually go through, under the Pratt Terry Overpass, come around, and these flows are flows, once again, that are trying to get back into the creek, and they overtop Main Street and come down this way. With these increased flows, 15,000 compared to 10,000, getting the BNSF Railroad Bridge done alone still has flows coming around. So we're looking at alternatives such as, do we need to do the BNSF Railroad Bridge and the Boston Avenue Bridge and repairs up here at Isaac Walton to get those flows through there? That's showing us that we still have about 300 CFS coming around through here, a lot less, but still flooding and flood plane in there. Or more likely is it that the ultimate solution is to get this channel all the way up to Sunset Street? And getting all the way up to Sunset Street would then facilitate removing all of this downstream area from the flood plane. You're still going to have flood plane south of the channel because this is overtop Hoover Road and is trying to get back to the channel this way. But moving the rest of the way up to Sunset Street is going to be the solution to get that first big break and get that core of the downtown area totally out of the flood plane. As we get upstream, so here's South Pratt Parkway. This is the area between Main and South Pratt Parkway with the purchase of the former Royal Mobile Home Park right through there that was destroyed in the flood. We have a lot of room here to continue with our widened channel. But once you get downstream or upstream of South Pratt Parkway, this area through here, particularly to Boston, the Boston Avenue Bridge, through the industrial area is the most confined and tightest quartered areas that we have. The railroad bridge through here, this is just very tight, a lot of constraints on trying to pass those flows through there. And this is the area, we've worked into our design on this, trying to minimize the impacts that we're going to have to adjacent properties. We did just come to you, and council authorized the purchase and acquisition of one property right here that is needed, and there are a couple of other properties that were in need. But we're looking at a design that will minimize that. And to do that, we've talked about it before, this section between South Pratt Parkway and Boston Avenue Bridge is going to have some stepped walls through here. It's not going to look like Cherry Creek with large concrete walls through there. They'll be stepped down, but they will help us get the capacity that we need through here without expanding out into more private property than we need to. The walls that we're looking at are going to be something like this type of material. It can be a very attractive material that's very graffiti resistant. It's not a smooth surface. They'll be about four to five-foot-high stepped walls that then tear out and come down and step down through that. So that's going to be one of the things, that'll be one of the different areas or one of the ways that we're looking at trying to get through this narrower section without having more impact on adjacent private property. So now to money. Funding. Sandstone Reach, total cost about $11.6 million. $10 million of that is coming from FEMA with our PAP funding, and also we have some GOCO funding that is working on that. We have about $1.6 million of local funding, which comes from a variety of different funds representing the ownership of that property out in that area. So that project is funded. There's no unfunded need. City Reach One from left-hand to main, much more expensive reach of project, about $28.2 million. $14 million of that is coming from FEMA and the state. About $14.2 of that is local match from a variety of different funds, predominantly our storm drainage bonds that were approved by Longmont voters. We also have sewer fund, water fund money in there. We also have some money in that area related to Conservation Trust and the park because a lot of what we're doing in that area is grading and work. Since we're in there, we're grading that park out and doing a lot of that park development work that will be there. Following that, we'll come in the next year and put the following touches on that, excuse me, nature area. So that reach is funded. Next reach up, City Reach 2A from Main Street to South Pratt Parkway. Shorter reach, less costly. The Main Street Bridge is doing some of the dirt work. We have the South Pratt Parkway Bridge that is scheduled for construction next year. When we finish Main Street, we'll work up on South Pratt Parkway. That is a funded project, and we're working on that. We have about $2.8 million worth of FEMA and state funding that'll go there, upstream there, about $3.2 million of local funding, bringing us to, that reach is also funded. Next one, City Reach 2B, South Pratt Parkway to the BNSF Railroad Bridge. Very expensive one. This is our walled section that we get into, also includes the BNSF Railroad Bridge. Cost of about $22.9 million. $9.3 million of that is funded from CDBGR Round Two and also is anticipated. We don't have that work, the details worked through, but we're working, as I said, with RTD, Dr. Cog, and BNSF, trying to come up with some partners for the replacement of that bridge, and $2 million is factored into that. We have about $7.9 million of storm drainage bond and street funding in that. It leaves us about $5.7 million of unfunded needs, and that is what we will be working hard to get as much funding as we can from CDBGDR Round Three.
I'm going to interrupt real quick here, and also let council have a chance to weigh in. But one thing to keep in mind on this chart, the only numbers that we know for sure are the first line. That's the only project that's gone to bid. We've got bids and we're good on. And there's good news there because the bids came in two to three million, about two million less than what we had estimated. So if there is any luck in the world, we may come in lower on the $28.2 million. And every dollar that we can save is allowing us to get further upstream. So, you know, think good thoughts, hope that we can continue to get very competitive bids. And the good news is this project has probably attracted more contractors than I've probably seen in my career. It's a very attractive project for people to work on, and so we hope for that. The other thing is, is on the Dr. Cog funding, we do have that funding secured, and that's about a $1 million of funding for the bridge. We are trying to convince the railroad and RTD to partner with us for the balance of that cost. And I also think there's a good chance on the CDBGDR Round Three money, but we're competing in a collaborative way with the other communities in the county for those funds. I'm hopeful that we're going to be able to get upwards of $3 million from that round of funding. Don't have it in hand yet, but we're getting close to that point. So I did want to make that point, that the only real known thing up here is line one. It could all change.
Councilmember Moore?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. So we're talking about City Reach 2A, Main Street to South Pratt. We purchased that property at Royal Mobile Home Park with a loan from the Fleet Fund, if I remember?
Councilmember Moore, we originally purchased that with a loan from the Fleet Fund that has subsequently been paid back from the Storm Drainage Fund.
That was my question.
It's paid back in full.
And given the information that I've been, from RTD, they're really not, they're out of money till 2030. What's the impact of RTD on this railroad bridge?
One of the things, the important aspect that we're looking at and what we've been talking to RTD about is the impacts that this bridge has on the transit station. I'm actually, that's not a good one. I'm going to go back to here because, and we, in about 2010- Uh, I'm going to go back to here because, and, and, and we, we, uh, in about 2010, we did what was called the Anderson Study back then as we were looking originally at this. Because what our statement to RTD has been is development of this transit station here, if you, if these flood flows are still coming through the site, then you've got to channelize those flows and create probably a throwaway cha- can't channel facility to carry those flows back down to the river in order to develop this site. So that's what we've been working with our redevelopment and planning and that on. So there's an aspect of that, that working to improve this bridge and keep these flows here and out of their site may be an important aspect and may actually be the cheapest way to develop that transit area.
So part of the 17 million would be going towards that bridge?
Correct. So in general, the 17 million, they're either going to have to put a significant amount of it into onsite mitigation. And we're talking to them about shifting that to a contribution to the bridge so we could save them money on their project and help us finish the bridge. And that's, that's been part of the ongoing, so it's a repurposing of dollars that they already have. That's what we're talking to them about.
And to add to that, the other benefit, I think, to Longmont is the ground that you use for drainage channels could be repurposed into whether it be redevelopment area. In other words, you, you get more area that you can derive economic benefit from within the core of your city as opposed to building, as Nick said, what is likely long-term going to be a throwaway channel. And so that's our logic of what we're trying to convince the folks at RTD and the railroad. The railroad was wiped out during the flood. I, I think they have an interest to keep their railroad open and to get a new bridge in there. So will we be successful? I don't know, but we are persistent.
Well, keep up the good relations, BNSF. We have two, two, uh, two, two projects with them right away, so, um, that's all I have for now.
And it's just, once again, when you, as you look at this and look at the impact as we talk about redevelopment and, and the impacts not only to the public sector, to the public improvements that are in there, but to private property, this, this area taking, completing this project, we take about 18, 1800, 818 acres and over 500 structures out of the floodplain. Uh, those are people, those are properties that are no longer paying flood insurance and that have a great deal more opportunity for redevelopment, uh, and safety than, public safety than otherwise.
Councilmember Peck?
Thank you. Um, Harold, I didn't understand the, uh, statement about the 17 million. Is that the 17 million from RTD for the garage or for the transit station?
Transit station. And so if they were to build a transit station in that location and we don't make the improvements to the floodplain, then they have to make improvements onsite to channel the water so they don't have flood issues on that location. We're, uh, the argument that we're making to them is that it's actually cheaper to make the investment in the BNSF Bridge for multiple reasons. One, because of how it, it can alleviate the floodplain issues at that site. Two, you help create a bridge that can handle fast tracks in the future. So there's multiple pieces coming together. And so if you repurpose it, then you, you allow for, uh, you give them more of ability to use their money on the, on the construction of the site, hopefully. And as Dale indicated, you have more land that's available for mixed use development and those types of issues.
Okay.
Continuing on upstream as we look at City Reach Three from BNSF Railroad Bridge up to Boston, this is one of the areas that we're hoping, uh, to work with the Army Corps of Engineers on. And to be clear, Army Corps of Engineer project through this is not where they would give us money and they, and we would do it. They would actually come in and do that project. Uh, but we had our kickoff meeting with them. We'll be working over the next year on the feasibility analysis that includes a cost benefit analysis of that to determine if this can move forward through their 205 program. And we're hopeful that it will. Has a total cost of about 15.5 million. 10 million of that could come from the Army Corps of Engineers. We would need to match that. 4.3 million of that is street fund and storm drainage bond money. The street fund money would be replacing the Boston Avenue Bridge as a part of that as our match, as the way we would see it. It leaves us possibly about 1.2 million dollars short. And once again, as Dale said, you know, when we open bids on these different projects, when you come down to a point of 1.2 million on this, that's within the realm. You know, I mean, if we get lucky and open bids on City Reach One and we're 2 million dollars less, that 1.2 is now funded. So that moves forward. I mentioned earlier the importance of going all the way up to Sunset, and that is the next reach that needs to be looked at. Probably from, uh, Boston up to Sunset is about 20 million dollars. We don't have any federal funding on that. We do not have any local funding on that. So an unfunded project of about 20 million, leaving us with a total of about 104.2, 46.1 and 31.2, uh, 77.3 million dollars funded. Um, and about 26.9 million dollars unfunded that we would still have to work towards.
And to add to that, so the timing, um, we're going to start spending a lot of money quickly. Once we, I, I have a different way of saying it, but we're going, the money's going to be going out the door, especially when we get both sandstone reach and city reach one underway. And, uh, that being said though, I, I, we've got, uh, a lot of work ahead of us. Uh, we think we can stay very busy between now and 2018. But, um, and I think we mentioned this as far back as your council retreat, um, we are continuing to try to get, uh, and will continue to try to get additional state, local, federal funding partners wherever we can to come with us. But there may come a time where we need additional resources locally. And, um, we will hold off on that until we really reach that point. But I feel the need to continue to remind everybody of that, that that's what's in front of us. Um, if we can make it go away, we will. But if we can't, we're going to be honest and deal with it upfront.
Just a cup, one last little bit we want to talk about. Like I said, we mentioned to you that we, um, uh, you were copied on some information that went out to adjacent property owners. Uh, and this first two reaches, sandstone reach and city reach one, were required as we're working in the floodplain and adjusting the floodplain to send out letters and as part of the CLOMER, the certificate, uh, conditional letter of map revision that changes the floodplain. And when we sent that letter out, because of the nature of this one that we have the existing regulatory floodplain that's wrong, the new existing conditions that's being developed, that's not going to be official until probably 2019, and we're changing that one, it gets very complicated. And so rather than trying to explain all that in the letter, we said, you're welcome to come on down. And we're having a meeting for those groups of people at the museum. Uh, it's on your council's, uh, calendar if anybody wants to come on down. That is, uh, the ninth, because I got it wrong in your first email. November 9th from 4:30 to 6:30. This is a map that shows the regulatory floodplain. As you can see, it showed, and this land line is just a match line. So here's Main Street. It showed all of those flows coming down and going under the Main Street Bridge, which we knew was wrong in 2010. Um, as you can see comparatively, that's the existing conditions. So all of this area up in through here, which not in the existing regulatory floodplain is actually in the floodplain. And as I mentioned this, because you will probably be hearing from other communities, Lyons just saw the first shot of this, their new floodplain, uh, about two weeks ago when we met in Boulder. Um, this is going to be going on out the way, the rest of the way out to the confluence with, uh, the South Platte. They're looking at other communities and, uh, other creeks. And this is going to have a significant impact on a lot of different communities with increased floodplanes coming into effect. When you look at this one, these two graphics show what would happen, um, post completion of City Reach One. And so you can see, we don't, we haven't made huge changes in the floodplain because once again, it's that matter of all of that water that's coming around the railroad tracks upstream and is overtopping Main Street. We haven't gotten that back down into this channel yet. So a lot of this green area is, is, is what would still be in the floodplain after completion of City Reach One. The purple shows what it would be like after completion of the entire project upstream. I would note though, that one of the important things is even with just City Reach One done, we are getting the wastewater treatment plant out of the floodplain. And that was one of the critical aspects when, when that was flooded during the 2013 flood and we had to shut the plant down for two days. Um, so that is there. I'm going to just briefly say that I'm still having a lot of review and we're probably going to go out. This, this little stretch that extends across 119 is very shallow flooding. And we're going to actually go out and do some spot elevations on here. I know in the flood, the, the Northern Lane got about six inches of water on it, but I still was able to drive through it. That was the only road that was open in town during the flood. Uh, I'm still not convinced of this little reach. And if it's there, it is very, very shallow flooding that would be considered relatively insignificant flooding. But I'm just bringing these three graphics up, that's part of what we'll have at that meeting to go over that and help explain to those property owners what is going on with that flooding. And with that, we'd be glad to answer any questions if there are. And thank you for being patient.
One question, I know that airport bridge, you know, withstood the flood, but it probably withstood the flood perhaps because the energy, you know, went around. If, if that water was all contained in that channel, would that bridge have survived?
I, I think that bridge would have survived. I, I can tell you, I was out there numerous times during that flood. When that main, when that Airport Road Bridge was designed, it was designed to pass the 100-year flows, but the flows, once again, don't get to that bridge. And, and our plan, our anticipation is they never will. You have another split flow that comes around here. And when you look at this upstream stretch right here, the plan would be to add in another box culvert underneath Airport Road up here, accept those flows and then pass those through these existing ponds and get them back to the pond that way. That's how we'd keep Airport Road open.
Okay, thank you. Well, I don't see any other questions. I think we kind of asked them during the presentation, so thank you.
Thank you very, very much.
Mayor Coombs, your final item is the consideration of the 2017 City Council meeting dates. And Valerie Skit's here.
Mayor Coombs and members of council, I'm Valerie Skit, your city clerk, and Sandy is here to help me with this item. Every year we try to get, uh, with you toward the end of the year and do some planning for the next year on your agenda items so that our staff can have these available as they start preparing items for the, uh, upcoming year. I put in your packet a list of meeting dates as they appear right now, by the first and third being study sessions, second and fourth being regular sessions. If we could just go month by month and maybe get a feel for one item, meetings that you want to cancel right now, then we can go ahead and start planning for next year. So let's look January, first January, if that works for you. Usually on the third.
71.
Ready?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Usually on the third Tuesday of the month, you, um, which is your general, your second study session, you have had an open forum. There's been discussion in the past whether you wanted to continue that, so just trying to get some, some input on that. Two head shakes? Three, four? It's four head shakes at least.
Okay, yeah, it's fine.
So we will make that a study.
But I have one thing, Mayor.
Yes, go ahead, Gene.
Oh, thank you, Mayor Coombs. Um, just with five Tuesdays, uh, what we've done in the past is we've tried to eliminate not, unless positively need to have it, if it's a study session, hopefully we will not have, you know, give us at least one day off.
Totally up to you.
I'm sorry?
That was my next, it was totally up to you, that was my next question. Do you want to have a study session on the 31st? There are three.
Unless positively needed, unless it's needed.
Well.
I don't know. That's New Year's. I mean, like, extend, I, I say get with the third.
Okay, so cancel the third? You will have, for this month, you have, um, the last two. I don't have that now. Oh, here it is. Yes, I did. Hang on. Just give it to Harold. Um, the 27th is canceled, so that week between Christmas and New Year's is canceled. It's up to you. Study sessions are your discretion.
The third or the 31st? What's counsel's?
Third.
Third. Third.
Okay, third.
Sounds like the third.
Pick the third off.
Cancel the third?
Third's good.
Okay.
We're doing that for staff, so you guys can spend time with your family.
Oh.
So then in February, you have just your four regular, two study sessions, two regular meetings. No, one of them's on Valentine's Day. One's on Valentine's Day, that's a regular meeting. You want to make any adjustments to February? No.
I guess we'll deal with it.
Okay. Before we get off of January and February though, we do, you do typically have a retreat toward the first part of the year. Are you ready to talk about that yet, or do you want us?
Just pick some dates.
So we have some suggestions because Super Bowl's on the 5th, so we, I know you try to avoid that weekend, 5th of February. Is that correct? Yep. So perhaps the 20th of January or the 10th or the 24th of February?
How about the 24th of February?
So just note that there's a coffee with council on that Saturday, which is fine. Last year we just did a one-day retreat on Friday. We could continue to do that if you'd like, or?
Yeah, we'll do that.
One-day retreat on Friday, the 24th?
Mm-hmm.
Great, great, thanks. Okay, so retreat on the 24th. And let's move on. Excuse me?
This is abnormal. Can we fight? I disagree, I don't want it on that day. Oh, I'm sorry.
Trying to plan ahead so you don't have to fight about it.
We now know who the problem was on council. I apologize and I'll be back.
Moving on to March, we have noted the dates of the National League of Cities Conference, their Congressional City Conference, and also spring break, both following March, on regular session weeks. So if, there's going to be a number of council members attending, um, NLC, we'll probably need to move that date. And I don't know how, how important spring break is to most of you. I know there's one, at least one with school, two with school-aged children.
I have children.
We can flip them.
That's what I was going to suggest.
Let's flip them.
Flip them.
Are you?
And then we don't do.
No, that's not what they said. So do you want to have a session at all on National League of Cities Week? Okay, so they will cancel that study session.
And the 28th is what I heard. That's a regular session.
You asked us to move the regular sessions to the first and third, so we're going to move those to regular sessions.
So do you want us to cancel the study sessions on NLC and spring break?
You will have no study sessions in March.
So we will meet the charter requirement of two regular sessions?
Two regular meetings, yes.
Okay.
Uh, in March, it's in, um, Washington.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, let's, we'll move the regular session to the 7th and the 21st.
Correct.
And cancel the study sessions on the 14th and 28th unless we have something really important to cover.
Well, at this point, if we cancel them, we'll cancel them and we'll work around it through the planning.
Okay, all right, let's do that.
April, you have four regular meetings, no real holidays that conflict or anything.
Looks good.
May, you have, uh, one, two, three study sessions, one of them is right after Memorial Day. I'm going to assume that's consensus, even though I can't see all the heads shaking.
Yeah. I'm fine with the 30th being gone.
June, you have, um, CML Conference that third week, it is a study session. You typically cancel that one? Okay? You will have a coffee with council that Saturday. We we will. We can certainly move that up to the 17th if you want us to.
Yeah, we'll probably need to move that because NLC. Or, CML. CML.
One of those alphabets. One of those alphabet soup ones. Okay, July, you have a study session on the 4th, which we assume is gone.
Yeah, it's gone.
Then you'll have two regular sessions and one study session that month then. Everyone okay with that?
Yep.
August, there are three study sessions again.
29?
29. Wait, why do you want the first gone?
No, she wants the 29th.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
We have to have the 29th.
We have to have the 29th because we have to introduce the budget by charter.
We don't care, Harold. It's just budget.
We do that down in regular sessions.
It won't be ready on the 22nd.
Councilmember Santos?
So can we just go ahead and change these all up? So make the, the regular session on the 29th, because it has, the budget has to be done, and just move everything up and kill one?
You can do whatever you like. The issue is that any ordinance introduced on July 25th, if you make the first a, on August, a regular session, you can't, you can't do second readings.
But if we kill the first completely, we can still have the regular session on the 8th, a study session on the 15th, and then have a regular session on the 29th just for the budget.
Yeah, you just, what you've done there is then make, make.
We can leave the study session on the 29th.
Do the budget?
Because we can introduce the, but we just have to provide that with, to the council, and we can do that on the study session. So that, it doesn't make a difference whether it's regular or study.
Get rid of the first.
Get rid of the first.
And then what we can do is watch the agenda.
So you can just get rid of the study session on the first?
Just kill, yeah, cancel the study session on the first.
And we can watch the agenda to make sure if other council members have to be out, we can manage the agenda where we provide the council with a budget.
It's always that budget.
Okay. September, you, well, before you cancel September, that is your budget month.
Need all four of those.
Yeah, we need all four. Yep.
You do need all four of those.
Jim, do you need all four meetings in September?
We would suggest you leave them.
I would keep them, and if it's possible, then cancel it, but.
I think it's, yeah, so it's too early for us to tell whether or not we're going to need all four. What we will do is put a note next to it saying that you all are interested in canceling that because of proximity to Labor Day. Then as we're turning in the budget, we'll be able to make a, a more educated comment and say whether or not we need it, so we can put a note on that date.
October, you again have three study sessions. One of them is on Halloween.
Yeah, let's stay home and, we have 24 trick-or-treaters come to our house.
So now, November is always a challenge, and it will be again next year, because next year is Election Day for our local elections, and you typically cancel that day, except the next week is NLC City Summit, and the next week is Thanksgiving. So if you would like an out-of-the-box suggestion that Eugene would have to comment on, you've canceled the 31st, which is Halloween, you might want to amend your rules of procedure and have your council meeting on a Wednesday night, the 1st. I know that's an out-of-the-box kind of.
Or you could go to NLC City Summit on Wednesday instead of Tuesday night and just understand that there may be some sessions in the morning on Wednesday that you may not make it to. You'd rather do it that way?
But we'd still cancel the 7th.
So in that case, you would cancel the 7th and the 21st. You would hold the 14th and the 28th, even if you were leaving for NLC.
We're going to, you guys are going to party.
Yeah.
So you'd have a regular session on the 14th, study session.
Or you could do the 1st, right.
Yeah. You typically only have two meetings in November, which are your regular sessions. And so if you leave those where they are right now and just cancel Election Day and cancel the 21st, which is Thanksgiving week, and not go to the conference until Wednesday morning.
Sounds good.
That's easier to explain. All right, then December, you need two regular sessions. What you typically have done in the past is flip the, either, you usually flip the meetings and, and get rid of the Christmas week.
Can I go back to November real quick? Are we going to, are we canceling, so school, don't we have the fall break, 20th through the 24th?
No, it's like.
Yes, we're canceling that one.
Cancel that.
So the 7th and the 21st are both canceled?
Yes. And the school break for around Christmas is the 18th through the 29th, those two weeks this year. They go back to school on the 2nd, which is the next week.
It's hard because you have November, we're keeping November 28th. Anything that would need to, is a two-week deal, so you have to go to the 12th. So is it possible to do, can't, change the regular, the 19th to a regular session?
And have two back-to-back regular sessions?
It's the end of the year.
Yes, yes. It is possible to do that. And if we have, since we plan a whole year in advance, staff knows about this a year in advance and can, can plan their ordinance introductions.
It's a regular session with some, few added consent agenda items and not a whole lot of action.
So what he's suggesting is study session on the 5th, regular session on the 12th, regular session on the 19th. And cancel the 26th.
Okay. All right. That works.
Does that give everybody, does that answer all your questions? Thank you very much. We'll get, we will bring this back at a regular session for you to adopt, and so you'll see it in final form.
All right, now it's time for mayor and council comments. Councilmember Bagley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I just want to say publicly a huge thank you to staff and my fellow council members for picking up the slack. I know that there's been some questions, and unless you're my Facebook friend, you wouldn't know. But on August 9th, my dad was admitted to the Mayo Clinic down in Phoenix and has been on the heart transplant list. And then two weeks ago, he got a heart transplant, and then last Wednesday, he got out of ICU. And so for probably 75% of those days, I was down there acting as his caregiver. And so we're all out of the, I mean, not out of the woods, because he's still in the hospital, but he'll hopefully be discharged next week, and my, my absences will no longer occur. So I don't know if that's good news or bad news for you guys, but, but I do want to just say thank you so much for, everybody was so cool and patient, and nobody yelled at me, and I, I just love you guys, so thank you. You can make up for it, yes, you can, you can yell now. So thank you so much, just also to the community. I don't like shirking my responsibilities, and I'll make up for it by being extra talkative and vote lots. Thank you.
Well, I'm going to make next slide my business of the week. I mean, they are just so awesome. They came out to my yard and put the line in exactly where I told them, just flawlessly, and have now taken my $310 bill down to about 100 bucks and have great viewing options, great phone, super fast internet. I used to do this backup of my accounting database in the cloud. It used to take 35 minutes, now it takes about 30 seconds, so it's, it's an awesome service, so. Anybody else? Councilmember Finley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I would really like to have my next slide, so if Tom Reen notices listening, I still don't have it.
Oh, and I don't have an ugly dish hanging off the side of my house anymore. Councilmember Christiansen?
Councilwoman Finley brought in tons of food, and she's the only one. Oh, you did too?
Oh, no. Mine's up there.
So the rest of us who forgot, we have until noon tomorrow to bring in a lot of food and beat the, beat the pants off those kids.
Councilmember, anybody else? All right. City manager, any comments?
Only, only comment is I feel Councilmember Finley's pain because I still don't have next slide. So I think there's three of us that don't have it, the two of us and Councilmember Bagley. No comments, mayor, council.
Can I ask one more question?
Sure.
At the, just not to pull us back into the muck, tonight at Public Invited to Be Heard, there was some, some questions about things happening out at Union Reservoir, and I asked the mayor, and then I turned to Councilmember Moore, and they were unaware. Is there any plans right now of any oil pipeline out there?
And that's, that's what we're, we're going to talk, that's what we're going to talk about in the presentation.
Okay, I just want to make sure that we didn't ignore it. That, that's coming back on the presentation.
All of that's coming back and what, and what's going on and what we're looking at.
All right, cool, thanks.
On December 6th.
City attorney, any comments?
No comments, mayor.
Okay, this meeting is adjourned.